Please be seated and I welcome Kathy Smith up and she's going to do the honors for us.
Good morning. You're definitely not supposed to do this during the ceremony. And then most of these people are very, very happy with their position. If you could please stand, Commissioners. And what I do is start with Mark. I want to have you say aye and state your name. And Catherine, you repeat yours, may go down the line, please. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, aye, state your name.
Aye, Mark Cox.
Aye, Catherine Grosso.
Aye, Mike Hart.
Do you promise or declare? That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And that I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland. And support the Constitution. And laws thereof. To the best of my skill and judgment. Diligently and faithfully. Without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of Commissioner for Calvert County. According to the Constitution. And the laws of this state. Congratulations. I'm going to have you all sign, please. And we're going to continue on with the Sheriff. You seem so far away there. You can come up if you want. I don't bite. I'm going to have you raise your right hand, the same thing, and you're going to repeat after me. Aye, and state your name. Do you promise or declare? That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And that I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland. And support the Constitution. And the laws thereof. And that I will. To the best of my skill and judgment. Diligently and faithfully. Without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of Sheriff of Calvert County. According to the Constitution. And the laws of this state. Congratulations. Ricky, I'm going to have you sign those and then after the ceremony, I'll collect all those papers.
Everybody's official. I don't want to start the next part until you're ready. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, the, each Commissioner and the Sheriff will invite up those that will assist in penning of the Commissioners. So we can start with Commissioner Cox.
That may be a sign to come.
That's a good theme song.
Commissioner Buddy Earl Hans. Commissioner Mike Hart. Commissioner Todd Ireland. Sheriff Ricky Cox.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have before you the 64th Board of County Commissioners and Sheriff. Congratulations. At this point, Commissioners, we would like for you to greet your audience. Commissioner Cox, we start with you, sir.
Good morning and welcome. I want to thank the College of Southern Maryland for hosting us as we've done today. And I also want to thank the Kellye Boardies who made this day possible. To my family and friends, it's been a long 12 months. Thank you for your support, the words of encouragement, and your prayers. I have a wonderful family, including four grandchildren, Carly, Aubrey, Tripp, and Walker. Two of my biggest supporters were Carly and Aubrey. They would go pass amateur, go to events, and even go to school and tell their teachers to vote for Pappy.
Thank you. To all who voted for me, I am humbled and words cannot express how thankful I am. Thank you. To those who did not, I hope I can earn your trust in the next four years. To the county administrators, department heads, and all county employees, thank you for the words of encouragement and the honesty in every conversation we have had. I must say, I'm excited to work with this board. We all have the county and the citizens first. Our visions are similar and the pathways are narrow. In closing, thank you for the opportunity to serve you and I wish you and your families a very safe and happy holidays. Thank you.
I want to thank the Colleges of Southern Maryland for hosting us and also for the staff, the county employees. They've just been great. This transition has really been smooth. They've guided us with velvet gloves, so thank you to all of the county employees. I also want to thank my treasurer, Raleigh Weckbaugh. She was my right arm. And I had a very small staff. It consisted of, our team, it consisted of Raleigh and Frank Grosso, my husband of 53 years, who has supported me on every adventure. And it's been a wild ride. I said to him when we got in the car, I said, well, here we go again, something new in our lives. My son, Justin, he set up all of my telecommunications stuff, so I really, really appreciated that. But like I said, when I was running, I'm running to represent the people of Calvert County. I'm not afraid to be a lone no on the Board of County Commissioners if I think it's not what our constituents want. I want to thank you all for being here and wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. Thank you very much.
So first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out this morning. This is a very special occasion and I want to thank the staff and the Community College for having us here today. And I want to welcome the three new Commissioners to the board. They have no idea what they're getting into. But Mike and I are going to do our best to help them through the process and get them on the ground and running. You know, as Commissioner Cox said, it is a humbling experience and when you go through it the second time, it's even more humbling because total strangers put their faith in you to protect this community and protect what we have. This is such a wonderful place and sometimes we don't really appreciate how wonderful it is. So that's why I got in, that's why these individuals got in, and every day, we're going to work to make sure we protect this place as best we can. I want to take this time to thank Commissioner Weems, Commissioner Gadway, and Commissioner McConkey for their service. And also want to thank Sheriff Mike Evans, I know he's here somewhere in the audience, for his service. You know, they've all done outstanding jobs representing all of you and it is a privilege and an honor to sit in this seat. So I want to send out my prayers again to Deputy Flint, hope he has a speedy recovery, and wish all of you a very Merry Christmas.
I want to thank you all for coming out. So many to thank, you know, I want to thank the Lord, staff, friends, family, you know, Commissioner Hans led on, you know, former Commissioners. It takes everybody to do the job, from the delegation to the Senate seat, you know, Delegate Fisher's back there, I've bent his ear many times. You know, a phone call from me is like, do you have a minute? Everybody knows it's an hour, you know. From the Mayors to Commissioner Weems, past Commissioner Nutter, all the past people I've had the fortune to serve with. I was as green as green could be eight years ago and didn't know it. That shows you even how green it could be. But each board has a journey and we don't know what this one will be, you know. We didn't know four years ago we would face COVID and the, you know, what that brought, you know, with people working from home and the school system and, you know. Before that, I remember all the heavy budget constraints, we were building Dominion. I didn't know half the acronyms that I was hearing coming out of that place and shutting roads down and everything. But I think the voters put together a good team. I think we all bring something different and I'm very excited to work with the new members here. And it's just like Commissioner Hans says, extremely humbling. There's just not enough thanks, you don't want to miss, you know, tell staff, don't tell me what I want to hear, tell me what I need to hear, right? Careful what you ask, right? So I will miss people that are, you know, no longer with us, that have retired or moved on. Everybody has helped me in the journey and I look forward to the new people that have come on. And as I said, absolutely with Officer Flint, our prayers are with him. What a tragedy and it's good to hear that he is recovering and hopefully he will be back with us very soon. So thanks again and especially to my family, they have to take the most, but, so, but thanks again. Oh, and Merry Christmas.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for being here and thank you to everybody who helped coordinate this and it's a wonderful attendance here today and I greatly appreciate everybody coming out for this. When I was running, the four main platforms that I ran on and I'll continue to support were the smart growth, control growth that we need to make sure, our education system. We need to continue to form those relationships with the school board. We've already broken some ground there, I think, and I think it's going to do, I think it's only going to improve from this point on. Next thing is our environment. I ran, you know, I want to support our environment, I want to take care of our environment and we need to constantly evaluate our environment and what's going on around us. But most importantly, the safety of the citizens of this county who voted for us and the children and our school system. That's the most important thing we need to continue to look out for. And I'm going to do my part to continue to make good decisions for the citizens of this county when it comes to these things and whatever else comes across this board. And like everyone said, I think everybody's excited about this board, I think we have a good Board of Commissioners here. I want to tell everybody Merry Christmas and a happy, safe, and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ireland. It's been a pleasure working with you my entire career at the Sheriff's Office and now seeing you being a Commissioner, we can work together as a team and I look forward to working with you again. It's very humbling here today because this is a long life dream of mine to sit here in this seat and it's really kind of hard to find the words and kind of to deliver them from my perspective on it. But I would like to thank everyone here today. Thank you to CSM for putting us together and I know Mark Willis and his team put a lot of work in this also, thank you, sir. This is a special moment for my family and I, that's why I had all of them up there. To be honest with you, I think I put them through hell my entire adult life, serving two tours in Iraq. I was there during initial invasion of Iraq, so we didn't have a whole lot of communication, so they didn't hear from me for a long time. So I just want to say thank you for my family for being by my side and always supporting me. Thank you. I want to thank the Calvert County citizens that voted for me. I look forward to working for you, the citizens. The Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to share this special moment with you guys and my commitment to keeping Calvert a safe place to live, work, and raise a family like I have and every one of us have up here. This is a commitment I will strive to keep as your Sheriff and I promise you that. This journey has started 25 years ago at Calvert High School when I told Sheriff Vonzo Ward in my class that I was going to be the Sheriff. This journey has started 25 years ago at Calvert High School when I told Sheriff Vonzo Ward in my class that I was going to be the sheriff one day. And here I am, I'm living my dream out. And my dream has come true. And I think it's through hard work, dedication, and sacrifice. I know my family sacrificed a lot during this whole campaign and throughout my career. They were there for me during the good days, the bad days, and the darkness. You know, doing this job, it does take a lot out of you. And I've been in that spot before and they pulled me out of it. And I want to say thank you for that. When I started this campaign, I asked God to give me strength. And when I did that, he put me to the test here in the first week taking office. When I got that call, it was terrible. I got dressed, went to the hospital, and I met DSC Flint in the ER. The ER floor was covered in blood. And I was there watching and helping his medical team. And I want to thank CMH, you guys did a wonderful job, Calvert Health, about keeping him alive. I just want to paint this picture because this is real. I mean, the floor is covered in blood. It brought a lot back, which I witnessed through my whole military career. And I was there when they pumped seven units of blood in and I'm trying to keep them alive. And while I said that, you know, our job is dangerous, it's real, it's needed. And continue to have the safest county in the state of Maryland, and that's my goal and my vision. What I'm asking for everyone today in this room is support me, support every deputy, that they may continue to do their jobs keeping us safe because we cannot do it alone. We need everybody in here. Because we do have a special place that we live in and I want to keep it that way. I just want to say thanks again. I'm looking forward to taking this journey with each and every one of you and making this the best Sheriff's Office it can be. Thank you and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're getting ready to call to order, which is the process that we put this new board basically into commission. But before that, Commissioner Hart would not leave me alone if I didn't research something. He sees me as a research analyst for joy. So the 64th Board of County Commissioners. So I looked up the number 64. And 64, and this is tough. So 64 is self-determination, independence, self-sufficiency, and home. The fifth one is family. You just inherited 92,000 relatives. So get ready because they're ready for you, so. With that, call to order, Commissioners, it's now time to convene the first meeting of the 2022 to 2026 Calvert County Board of County Commissioners. To begin, we'll need a motion from the board to call a meeting to order. May I have a motion? Second? All those in favor? I've always wanted to do that. The first item on the agenda this morning is to approve the agenda. May I please have a motion to do so?
Move to approve.
All those in favor? The next order of business is to elect the President of the Board. May I please have a motion to nominate a President of the Board of County Commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Commissioner Hans as President of the Board.
Second?
All those in favor? Motion passes. It is my honor to now turn the meeting over to the Board President, Commissioner Hans, to request a motion to elect a Vice President and to conduct the meeting. Sir.
Thank you. Thank you, fellow Commissioners. Appreciate the support. The first item, next item on the agenda is to elect a Vice President. The floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Mike Hart.
I have a motion to nominate Mike Hart for Vice President and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Posed, motion carries. Congratulations, Mike. Next item on the agenda is to elect a representative to represent us at the Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee. Floor is open for nominations. I nominate Catherine Grasso.
Second?
I have a motion to nominate Catherine Grasso as the Calvert County Representative to the Mako Legislative Committee. Any, and a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. We also need to elect an alternate to the Mako Legislative Committee. Floor is open for nominations.
Make a motion to elect President Hans as an alternative for Mako?
They're struggling there for a minute. This is what I deal with every week. I have a motion and a second to nominate Commissioner Hans as the alternate to the Mako Legislative Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Any other nominations? I should have called for that, sorry. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. I think that concludes our agenda.
Yes, sir.
Before we do the benediction, I just want to again thank the NJROTC color guard for presenting our colors here today. The musicians from Huntingtown and Calvert High Schools, really want to thank them for coming out today. Eagle Scout Evan Davis and the Girl Scouts of Troop 6333 for their help here today to make this successful. Want to thank Kathy Smith, the Clerk of the Court, for swearing us all in today. Also, on behalf of all the Commissioners, again, I want to thank Commissioner Weems, Commissioner Gadway, Commissioner McConkey, and Sheriff Evans for their service to this community. And also want to extend a warm welcome to our new Sheriff, Ricky Cox. Look forward to working together. And, you know, we have a lot of work ahead of us. Like I said, these three have no idea what they're getting into. But as Commissioner Ireland said, I think we have a good board. I look forward to working this board because everybody on this board has the same goal in mind, and that's to protect this community. And we're going to work every day to do that. And they're going to learn very quickly that every decision they make is going to get criticized from one side or the other. And somebody mentioned their family, I forgot to thank my family. I chose to do this, they didn't. And sometimes they get the blunt of my decisions. And so I want to thank them for putting up with me. The rest of you will figure that out. Just thank God I don't own a liquor store.
Not going to hold that against you, but it is normally a requirement.
For Commissioner Hart, for Commissioner Hart serves in a public forum every single day. People come into his store every day and complain about something that he did or didn't do. So so glad I don't own a store. Yes. So that's all I have. Again, I want to thank all of you for coming out and have a very Merry Christmas. And at this time, I want to ask Pastor Jones if he would come up and give us the benediction.
I left somebody out of mind too. I want to thank the fire service that's here today. You guys did a fantastic job and without you guys, you know, I think it would have went the other way for our deputy. I just want to say thank you to you guys too also. Appreciate everything you do.
I'd also like to thank my family and my team. I forgot. And Kim Freeland, where you at? She was my treasure. Poor Kim. I don't think she knew what she signed up for either, but I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Any more do-overs? And we're just getting started. Pastor Jones, you better come fast. I'm here.
You're here?
Let us pray. Gracious Creator, we give you thanks for the graces and the wisdom through democracy that has allowed us to elect public servants. We pray that you will guide them, that they might seek fairness and justice in all that they do. God, we pray for their families, that they might just simply endure the call to service that they did not sign up for. And God, for our community, may we just simply continue to be supportive of those who serve and protect. May we forever be thankful for those who volunteer and give up their skills and their resources to save and protect lives. And in all things, may we give thanks to you, that we might live and continue to flourish as a community committed to peace and love in this season of love. That all who believe in such affirm it by saying, amen.
So I need a motion to adjourn? Have a motion, a second to adjourn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Everybody have a very Merry Christmas.